See if he wanted to nominate anybody. And I put that on the city website just so people could. Look in, you know, have it on there if anybody had any suggestions.
I pumped it all the way out with my hands and, you know, just holy clever. It took, this is when I first put it back in and then absolutely not weekend. It's two days.
None of them are just accident. I don't think they're more.
Need a very short, strong person.
Kind of, I guess a few of them we can discuss.
Well, it's basically crawl on your hands and knees.
Okay, it looks like you put your thing on there for accident. Seven ninety six, it says, "We word in such way to authorize mayor." Yeah, Kyle came home because Madison just got back in town. And so he just flew up this weekend. Did a little bit of hunting and he's like, "Dad, I'm still gonna go camp out on top of the mountain." I'm like, "No dude." Yeah, yeah, let's camp out up there.
Sleeping in your truck at the bottom. Like a really, you know.
Deer are gonna be moving around about twenty-four seven right now. The wind and the rain. Happy to finally be home from my cold out. Last four weeks. I've gone to travel over like, you know, Friday to Monday morning. Went from Thursday to Sunday. Knocking? Same thing that happened in every community, power outages, wrecks everywhere, trees down. I'm not sure. I get all the fallout for all the power outages, so.
Well, at least we were better off than Ketchikan.
Oh, Craig was. And Juneau, 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 yeah.
There's a lot of rain, man, seven inches in one day.
Oh, wow.
I'm surprised it didn't take hits count off fast. Did you see that deal that was in the paper where somebody had a little snapshot of it? This bus goes running by and goes huge wake off of it and said, "I heard this was a no wake zone." I hear it was right in front of where Brittany exists. No, that's, I don't know why Ketchikan doesn't drain better than that. It's all downhill.
Yeah, right.
I think we drain better than they do, so.
Yeah. Well, that's all fill. Nobody really, you know, a lot of people don't know that. That that whole, everything in the streets all the way to where the mall is and all that stuff is fill, so. Dealing with their aqueducts and they're going through replacing all their water line in the middle of town as they're doing that. And asphalt runs at the same time, so.
For how many of the time? You know, when I got here in nineteen seventy-four, they were repairing the road there every year since.
Well, it's funny, asphalt only lasts as long as, um, your rock. And so back then, it used to have a rock source, so you get twenty-year lifespan out of, uh, call it super paved rock. And now, like you know, they re-deal every seven years. Because after seven years, the rock grates so bad that it maybe just goes away, so.
Two years, they put that last go around downtown, which was awful about.
Yeah.
Gold out here.
Oh, man. I think, yeah, before that it was. Understanding mayor that they were having issues, uh, you know. Probably getting some pretty good holes there underneath the blacktop right now. Trying to figure out how they're gonna fill all those voids in.
Yep.
Kind of like our old punching logging roads. Mike's gonna call in, right? Mike's here, okay. She said right last minute, I think that she wasn't gonna be able to call in, but she should be here.
That contract for the windows, wasn't there gutters included?
It's a stunner. As I look around, I don't see one gutter on the hill.
In the walkway. There's a lovely tree around that bit.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that's what was in there.
I'll have to look at it.
Yeah.
Tell them, hey, we got, we left the windows, but.
I don't think any of the guys are here either.
Okay.
I think most of them went to Sitka.
Actually, they're home now.
What's his, what's his name? I, I don't know. De Castro?
Yes.
See if Chanel's gonna walk through the door right about now. Still got John Thorne, Mike?
Yes, you do.
Perfect. That means we gotta call him. Call the meeting to order at six thirty-one. Roll call, please.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Jan Trojan?
Here.
Josh Bennett?
Here.
Sean McKinley?
Here.
Paul Skidover?
Yes, I'm here.
Mike Cameron?
Here.
Okay. Sean Thomas is absent.
Motion to approve this agenda as early?
I'm motion to approve if this agenda is written.
Second.
Open for discussion? All those in there? All right, thank you. Moving on to hearing from the public. You got a public comment out there today?
Yes, we get some though, I need to look there.
Yes, please state your name.
My name's Terry Weller. Good evening. I guess I got a couple of comments here. So transient mortgage rates for vessels, um. I guess I can understand if I was here permanently and had a transient, could be a full, uh, hit a permanent slip. That, uh, I would not be happy either. I know in Sitka, I am on their list for a permanent mortgage slip. And I get reduced rates. Uh, I'm not sure exactly what that is, but it's way less than I would be paying if I was paying transient mortgage. So that's an example of something that might be possible to help these guys out instead of paying full transient mortgage fees. Cause I know that's expensive, very expensive in Sitka for sure, so saves me a lot of money. And I can eventually, you know, ten years down the line, maybe get a slip up there. But for now, I'm paying, uh, a lot less than mortgage. Uh, let's see, this city of Craig memorandum. Uh, about the Tongus National Forest Roadless Rule, totally against this memorandum. We pay for these roads, we need access to our, to our forest. I know in Arizona, I go down there, the roads are everywhere. You can go everywhere on the national forest that you can get your four-wheeler on. Doesn't matter if the road's washed out, doesn't matter if it's unsafe, which is one of the excuses they did for closing our roads. Oh, these are unsafe. Well, baloney. I mean, up there, the roads are totally washed out. If you can get across it in your four-wheeler, then you can use them. And that's exactly the way it should be here. And, uh, let's see. I think those are the two that I saw. That I needed to talk about. And then, of course, the last one is the, uh, person here in support of Craig, CFI Industries. This whole southeast Alaska needs a new setup mechanic. Uh, we're losing mechanics every day. We've got one young guy in Sitka. We've got a guy in Petersburg that just retired, week on, I think. We're losing our mechanics. We need every single one of them in southeast Alaska we can get. Last time I tried to have, uh, Jamie and Ketchikan work on my engine, he told me no. And if Craig hadn't showed up here to rebuild my engine, I would have been in trouble. We need every single mechanic that we can get. And that can get set up too, uh. With the increased building that he's putting in, he's also gonna be able to offer a lot more services. Uh, flame spraying, uh, shafting, he's got, can set up the larger, the larger lathe. It's just gonna be a lot more that he can do, which will provide better services for this community, including the mines, the mill. Uh, he can get help in so that he's not always way behind. He's got way more work than he can handle. And so we need to set the building up so he can get people in here to, to help him. And so that would better serve the community. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Dennis Watson, um, fifty-year resident of Craig, fifty-one-year resident of Craig, former mayor. Um, I wanna speak to the machine shop property out there too. You know, we beat that horse pretty severely for quite a while. So I think everybody understands that, uh. The services that he provides, you know, a lot of them, you'd have to go down to Seattle to get. You know, it's just wonderful to have something like that here in town, you know, and, and, you know. Like, as fishermen, I certainly feel good about it. We'd seen recreational boats in there, charter boats in there. He's done parts for the sawmill, parts for logging outfits that he has to manufacture or fix. And where else do you go to get this done? You know, it's pretty cool that we have such a thing. And, uh, you know, getting this thing underway and, and getting shelter there so you can actually work out of the rain. You know, would be pretty cool too. You know, cause it's kinda nasty right now. You know, we got our haulout sitting up there all a million pieces out in the open. Everybody getting rained on is working on it, but, uh. And I, I wanna mention one thing about it, you know, we, I think we resolved the issue of whether or not that property can be sold. We've been selling property all along. It's kind of settled. I'd like you to think back when, um, when we were dealing with, uh, CTA purchasing or acquiring property down at the cannery. Well, at the beginning, there was, uh, in the works was what would have probably been a very attractive lease. And because we didn't really know where we were gonna go with that property and it seemed like a reasonable thing to do, but. Uh, the deal was is that the financier or the granting agency, whoever was providing the money for it, required that the property be, be owned. Well, here we have the same situation. You know, that the financier or the banks require you to have a deed of the property. That's, that's what they want for backing. And it's not unreasonable. It's down all over the place and, uh, I've done it before with my own stuff, so, uh. Please consider all that and consider the good that comes out of that place right now. I, it's helped a lot of people out that otherwise would have been in real trouble because there was just nowhere else to go. Thank you very much and, uh, please consider what I said.
Thank you. Yes, please state your name.
Lisa Radke. I just had a question, you know, on the Roadless Rule Act, or the Roadless Rule. Why did they do seventy water bars? Does anybody know? On the roads that we have?
For every mile of logging road that you put in, you have to take a mile, you close a mile of road. That's why they're more temporary. Um, you have some roads, uh, considered like red culverts that, um, fail. Some roads were hard to keep open. Years ago, we used to have something was called an access management plan that was ran by the Forest Service and where they were allotted to keep us, uh, basically so many miles of roads open, like twelve hundred miles of road. When they put the gate up out there at the mine, that cut off like forty-eight miles of access on POW, but they still kept it in our inventory. Um, years ago, about ten years ago, the Forest Service, um, uh, couldn't even tell you what roads were forced, were four-wheeler roads. Driveable roads or Jeep roads. Um, so they didn't, so they don't give anybody tickets when they drive out them. Um, I'm probably gonna guess now we're probably down to eight hundred miles of road because they haven't been inventoried. The alders and everything else has closed them out. Um, they always, usually when they close out a road, they put it out to the public to make sure that it wasn't like, uh, uh, somebody tribe, community won't say, "Hey, I go hunt, gather out there all the time. I want the road open." They took that in consideration and then they would work together on how to keep those roads open. Um, the ones where there's big rock slides and so on and so forth. And then, um, yeah, that was on the, on the Forest Service side. And then, you know, try that quite a bit of, well, all the roads here were built for logging. So as, um, as, uh, they started closing themselves out or they closed them out on their way out. Um, bridges are expensive, so they'd reuse the bridges elsewhere and pull the bridges out and close the roads out.
So do they still have where people can give feedback if they wanna keep that rule open? The Forest Service or you don't know?
The, have to give the Forest Service. I know that the state and the, you know, on the federal state level, they still talk about it in the meetings. But, um, locally, we haven't, we went away from having a local RAC committee to now, you know, a role RAC committee, so. Um, they're, I know they're restructuring right now with everything that's going on, so, um, I would love to see. I, I would love to see the access management plan having, you know, being talked about, cause it, cause it is a big thing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Basically, the Roadless Rule Act addresses filling no more roads in the Tongus. Um, it's basically, um, the Forest Service hasn't, uh, put any significant, um, uh, timber cells out in several years. I think they put out two million on the however many million acres that they have in the last year. And the state has been keeping the timber sustainable lately. Um, and so the state's been, I think they still owe the state of Alaska five million acres, uh, the Forest Service does. Um, and they were, I think they were allotted a one hundred and five million acres and they only got a hundred million acres, so they're still looking for that five million acres. And they've been kinda battling out with the Forest Service here lately. Just got back from Southeast Conference, so a lot of it's still fresh in, fresh in my mind, but, um, yes. Basically, the, I believe the letter Mr. Campnichard wrote was, uh, looking for, Forest Service fifteen years, well, twelve years ago, got a fifteen-year plan. To make, um, second growth, uh, harvest basically a hundred percent and go away from old growth. And that was about twelve years ago. Um, and that's kind of the plan that they're implementing. Viking lumber in order to stay open, they're asking for, you know, spruce, you know, Sika spruce to keep all the tone woods and everything else going in the market. As well as they are moving forward the veneer mill to, um, take on some of the second growth. So from my experience being a fourth generation logger, if you put out a second growth, um, timber cell and it's a ten-year cell, you're gonna have harvested in five. Because all the processes, processors and, and everything else, so. Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On the Angsko lands. And actually the Forest Service too. I remember years ago, uh, CTA received a letter from the Forest Service. And they've had even more cutbacks since then. Number one, the maintenance. You know, with the cutbacks money-wise across the country. They didn't have dollars to maintain them and it's also a liability issue. I know that the Angsko corporations, those were the two main reasons why they, um, put those water things across. Was the maintenance and the liability issues.
So liability, I mean, in Arizona, you can't even get past the roads. They're still open. So they may be saying something about liability, but in Arizona, you can go wherever you can get. If you can walk the road, you can go. The roads are open. So why they tell us here we can't go on these roads, I have no idea. But I know there I can go everywhere. If there's a road, open or not. Whether you can get a car there or not. I can walk it, I can go. In fact, I do all the time, walk those roads. You can't get a car there, can't get a four-wheeler there, so you can walk it.
Yeah. I remember Richard Trojan, he did a lot of, uh, closing the roads out and he talked about this like about ten, eleven years ago. And I went to those meetings and he said, you know, the ones you drive out that I, that I put to bed, you can still get a Toyota out of them. He goes, cause somebody goes out there and they get injured, um, you can still get a Toyota out of them. Our roads are gonna close themselves. Millie brought up a really good point for us to actually make, keep those roads maintained that were for har- um, harvesting logs. Um, nowadays you see the ones that we put D one on, the three hundred and some miles that the Forest Service keeps up is for two reasons, mining and logging. They still have old growth stands or that mining out there. Um, the rest of the roads trying to keep those open. Um, but the Roadless Rule Act is nothing to do with the roads that are already built. It has to do with the opening up new roads in the Tongus. But, yeah. On the dock issue with the mortgage transit rate, I talked to a young man, Bowen Price, this, this afternoon and, um, I told him, "Take it to the harbor committee." Um, I, I believe the rate they got, um, brought up was the three-month rate, not the, doesn't, they did away with the six-month rate. And that increased, um, everybody's harbor fees down there immensely and everybody's on the list and you're local and you live here and you're a member of Craig. I said, "The discount that God voted down there the other evening that I personally voted down was because I told them that." Somebody at the voting card who lives in Craig that pays sales tax or lives in the community of Craig is, is local. And you put Port St. Nicholas out there on that and they come into the mix, which I have nothing against the residents of Port St. Nick, I, I, but. Um, our, our city sells, our property tax pays for us to be two hundred thousand dollars in the rent in the harbor. Um, so, and I told them before they brought it here, if you brought it with me without having, you know, given them the, the local tax break as you do with the people in the community. Then I would have said yes, a hundred percent. Um, and I do, I, we got young guys out there trying to make a living and it's expensive out there. And if you're on the list and you, you live here and you're local to the community of Craig, then, yeah, if I'm, hopefully the harbor committee and Ponce can, we can look at, you know, giving these guys. Uh, you know, the same rate as you are paying here. Cause, you know, that mortgage rate is to get the money from the Saners who don't live here or coming in like that and. Um, I lean on the harbor master and the harbor committee, so I've learned in this as I go. And then when, um, I hear this stuff, he wrote a nice letter as well, um, I see exactly where, you know, where it was coming at. It wasn't just the transient rate, it was taking away that six-month rate and then only having, you know, if you have a slot, but, yeah. Alrighty, more here from the public. Please state your name.
Patrick Ridley. I'm just here to support CFI Industries. Having a mechanic like that doing the work that he does here is hugely important for our local fleet. Uh, so, I mean, he's putting a new engine in my dad's boat currently. He found a pump for me. You know, he goes above and beyond for the local fleet. We're all guys that live here year-round. Uh, having somebody that can service that shipyard right there, uh, is just huge for the community. I mean, it keeps people here doing those projects and then you're getting out to the local stores, you're just doing everything here where. If he wasn't here, you know, he'd be up in Wrangle, I'd probably be gone, at, at, at least in Ketchikan somewhere, you know, so. Him helping the local fleet is hugely important and if, uh, him being able to purchase this to expand those services he provides, it's just gonna make it better for the local fleet to get hauled out of the shipyard. And for people to be able to do those projects here instead, instead of taking all that business out of Craig, off in front, off in front of whales, so. I just wanted to say that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Yes, if we wanna be a fishing community, we gotta have a Randy's on the can. The, the process has been taken along longer than normal just because wanted to make sure that everything was, uh, covered. There was a lot of concern with the Fortune C three land and, um, I didn't want, uh. The Stanley to be foot in the situation where, you know, we goes and pays for, you know, an appraisal or something like that down the road and then it doesn't get passed. Because that's money out of, uh, the pocket and so, um, wanted to make sure that everybody was educated. And so that's why it took a little bit longer than normal. Alright.
Can I mention something just?
Absolutely.
This is totally.
Please state your name.
Craig Stanley, CFI Industries, um. So I, you know, I've worked on city equipment and I, I work on the harbor, uh, haulout. Kinda frustrated right now because I told Hans this week, or last week, I would not work on the haulout unless it was in the building. Um, Hans said he'd work on the haulout. And right now, hydraulics and hydraulic equipment are exposed to the elements of rain and weather and moisture. I'm hydraulic certified, I'm trained, this is a known. Um, uh, you know, I brought this up to Hans. He said, you know, he's gonna do it in front of my building. And then I had to move because I had to work on a boat next to my building. It's kinda frustrating, that's all. Uh, I, it's more for the equipment than it is for Hans. But, uh, at the same time, I also read something in Agenda that, uh, um, the city forklift was returning back to the ice house. How? Who's fixed it? I, I, I wrote, you know, a bill to the city, "Please buy a new one, a new used one." It's four thousand dollars to fix this. Equipment and you can get a, a used one on it, you know, that's not nineteen eighty-four. Uh, you know, in an auction house, any day, every day, it saves yourself some money. This, I mean, cause you, you're getting to the point where you can't get parts for that thing anymore. And Hans said he'd fix it himself, so I'm getting kinda frustrated there. Um, and it's, it's not my business, it's the city's business. But I care about stuff I touch. And the electronics on that and the haulout are my responsibility, my liability. I touched it. It's, it's, it's on my insurance, you know. Um, so the haulout means a lot to my business as well. And I'm just kinda frustrated that it's sitting out in the rain. And the, the forklift, nothing's happened with it. You know, I loaned the city my forklift. I didn't charge the city a dime for my forklift for two weeks while I was down there doing ice house work. Because I wanna work with the city. It's what we do here. We work together. Yet, nothing's happened with that forklift and I don't know if anything's been brought up about the forklift. But the Ice House forklift needs to go away. It, it's a lost cause, it's, it's out of age. It's, you're just gonna keep throwing money at it until there's no more parts left for it.
Yeah, one thing I've seen on the memo for the Ice House forklift, I believe, was they were returning the rental forklift. Um, I thought, um, they had a rental forklift that they were returning, so.
It's been Hans's forklift.
Oh, okay, alright, yeah. But no, I will address that with the harbor tomorrow, um, about that machine. I think it's been brought up by other people. We got that shop down there, that's what it's for, to facilitate the haulout.
Or the forklift.
Or, 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 or the forklift, yeah. Can't keep stuffs next to the ocean, but, no, thank you, yes. Love to see where those pumps are. I know the, the last time the pumps were ordered from France and they didn't get any replacement pumps on the shelf. And so hopefully we have, uh.
There, there are no pumps coming. The pumps are gonna be rebuilt, if they can be rebuilt, out of motors for the haulout. So. They've been set in silence.
They're set up here, okay, alright. Thank you. Alright. Please state your name.
Yeah, Andy Deering. Uh, I just wanted to make a comment about the haulout. Uh, I think, um, I know Dennis and Millie were. Uh, I think, um, I know Dennis and Millie were definitely here during the time, but you'll recall it's the city made a pretty big deal out of making sure there was a building for that hauler, for our, for our boat hauler to be stored in. And, you know, at the time it was a controversial issue and we really needed to get it and we put the money toward it and had it built. And you know, it's not used. And so from a taxpayer standpoint, we look at that as just a big mistake, you know? I mean, if it wasn't made, if it wasn't the right size or if it wasn't quite, I mean, they complain that it doesn't fit in there well or whatever. Um, you know, just acknowledge that it was a mistake and try not to make mistakes like that again, you know? For taxpayer's standpoint, we look at that, that's absurd. Absurd to spend the money on a building and not put the, and not, not put the hauler in the building. So, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Alright, any more here from the public? Alright, moving on to reading correspondence. Most of it was informational, the one that I would like to, um, look at, I guess, is the Quack Veterans Dinner donation request is one that we had a we had a, we would like to do a donation with the.
Mr. Mayor, I would like us to donate something for that because that's a very worthy cause.
Absolutely.
You know, a lot of our older vets are no longer with us and they've sacrificed their lives for our freedom. And I think we should honor them with, you know, however we can do it.
Mr. Mayor, do you know what is left or did we get replenished?
We got replenished, yeah.
Okay, so that's what, two thousand dollars?
I think we have, I watched it.
Six or seven?
Six.
Okay, six.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're at the very beginning before we can even pull anything out of this. And we haven't pulled anything else since July.
Ooh, appropriate five hundred dollars, second.
That's what I was gonna say, five.
Me too.
Alright, me too.
Right on, open for discussion. Alright, roll call vote please.
Chanel McKinley.
Yes.
Michael Campnich.
Yes.
Millie Skunover.
Yes.
Josh Bennett.
Yes.
Jan Truvin.
I think I should refrain, I'm a vet, so.
Oh.
It's not a conflict of interest.
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, we're all good.
Okay, yeah. So that's four yeses, okay, thank you.
Five.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, so she did, okay, five, five yeses, alright. There's some of this literature in the back there too for the first fishing fleet, there's a few requests for um board members and stuff like that, we put it out on our website. Um, it was just stuff that came in last minute, kind of crazy, added too much stuff last minute, but figured we would uh, put it out there for the public to, to look at and if they're interested or know anybody that they might be interested to be nominated. Usually I learned in this field, if you're not there, then you get nominated for stuff because you can't turn it down, so. But. Anybody else have any big bad topics on the reading correspondence? Alright, hearing none, we will move on to consider resolutions and ordinances.
I motion to approve order seven ninety-six authorizing the mayor to negotiate the sale of the city-owned property to CFI Industries.
Second. Open for discussion.
Do you have any discussion, Jen, you made the motion. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm completely fine with this, as you've heard, everybody in the community is for it. There's been nobody, nobody has said anything negative through this process. The only thing I ask, if this gets voted through, that we could have for, or override a refusal or the purchase man, amount of whatever's negotiated and the amount that the possible owner would put into the project, you know? So the only thing I ask out of, if, if this moves forward.
And that's been the going rate.
Mr. Mayor, something in that, remember when we talked to the attorney about this and the Sea Alaska issue?
Yeah.
I mean, we need to let people know because if um, Craig were to do what the attorney said, then we could get sued from Sea Alaska as the seller. So I think somewhere in there that needs to be stated to cover us.
Absol- absolutely, those are both perfect examples because that was what was presented in the APNT contract as well. There was a whole harmless waiver for um, Sea Alaska land for subsurface rights. Um, as well as, because Sea Alaska still owns the subsurface rights, so if you go dig a big hole and start hauling stuff out or something like that, then that belongs to Sea Alaska. Um, so, um, and then there was also what Josh had brought up on there was um first right of refusal will be sold back to the city of Craig. Um, so that means if you're looking at selling it, we get the first right of refusal to purchase it back.
Mr. Mayor, I also would like to same, use the same literature as in the CTA purchased land, that any legal fees will be put on the buyer if the subsurface is tampered with.
I got a quick question on the Sea Alaska subsurface tampering stuff because I'm not up to date on all that. Um, so, my understanding usually in most coastal areas is removal is permit, you know, you have to have authorization for removal. Um, and most, up to certain areas to add into any kind of waterway, you actually have to have kind of promote, you know, permission. What, is there any issue with me leveling the land out there that if putting a slab down that's gonna cost me, you know, to go to Sea Alaska to, to graze?
Basically, they own like fifteen to twenty-five feet underneath your property and so since your property's already been developed, if you do get into like where you're digging down five, ten, six, seven feet, we would contact Sea Alaska at that time and if they would uh disposal fees, sometimes they might target like a disposal fee. This is really geared for when you come into a piece of raw land and you're drilling and shooting and you're hauling rock away. Um, they get paid royalties for their rock as well as their overburden. Um, so where you're kind of set up, if you were looking at doing a big excavation out there, um, it would be good to get ahold of uh Jack Beckman and just have him look at it and, and cover your bases, but basically what you're looking at doing, it's already been, you probably don't want to disturb that anymore than it is right now besides leveling it out and pouring slab on it.
Where the footers that were going in were four feet, but on one side of the property, that's only digging down six inches. Another side of the property, it's actually, you know, closer to, you know, thirty-six inches, but we're not getting.
Now you got several yards of rock, there's several feet of rock there that's uh, has, what was, be considered was already placed there um, on the subsurface, so you're good. Just don't dig down into the, all of the fill that was put in there because, um, yeah, just stay, stay above the rock. I think I filled that in, it was the first time I ever drove dump trucks, was on that project, so, yeah. Get the water lines, built that row marine, built sea, built the bridge and, and the fish farm, so yeah, that was a good lucrative project out there.
Thank you.
Yes. Any more discussion?
Um, I'd like to address the council, um, you've, you've made your concerns known. Has any other council members had any concerns about CFI Industries, what our intentions are with the, the properties, anything that I can address?
I think the biggest concern was just the legality of the fourteen C three land because we were hearing it over and over again and we had to hear it from uh, we had to seek legal advice and, and see what it was and Dennis is a great wealth of knowledge. Um, but once we found out that there's, there's no restrictions, there is a Sea Alaska subsurface right and then everything else that goes with it, the liability waiver, uh, it'll be something that of course I'll up, pop right up and go over really well somewhere the viability is off of the city. But, um, yeah.
Well, I'd like to just take a quick minute to, um, you know, last time I was there, I gave you a business plan of what my plans are. But you guys don't really know who I am per se and my resume. I'm done consulting for NASA and for Jeff Azos. I have a wealth of knowledge and a wealth of information. Um, my electronics, my robotics, my PLC programming, my hydraulics, to, you know, everything that I do. Um, I'm a value ass, added asset to any town that I go to. I don't plan on leaving, I love this town. Um, and I, it doesn't bother me when, you know, the shop next door comes over and they have a problem with someone's car that I can help them out with. And so I go over and offer them free advice because I know that if I don't, it'll end up on my lot the next week. Um, and it's best to have them fix it. But that being said, I work on the city equipment all the time and, you know, I uh you know, I'm here to be an asset, I'm not here to be a burden. And I do have a wealth of knowledge, I can fix emergencies, like dire emergencies with PLCs, water plants and electrical plants, stuff like that. I've trained union electricians uh, for many years. Um, my resume goes way deep, you guys don't know really who you have here, um, just other than a diesel mechanic. But you're gonna, in the next few years, get to know me a lot more. Um, but I just want to put it out there that I'm not bothered when I get calls to fix emergencies. And I put emergencies above everything else, whether it's the fishing fleet, their emergencies come first, because their lives are at stake. But other lives are at stake, I, I take those emergencies very seriously too. Uh, especially water, water quality and then power and all that as well, so, you know, I, I have a wealth of knowledge that I'm willing to share with everybody and, and, you know, to benefit the community. So, just not.
I'm really long yet because I'm talking to about same people right now.
Mr. Mayor, there's never a question, Craig, about what you do. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out how valuable you are. Our main concern was the fourteen C three lands. We've also had letters and numerous people come in because the city doesn't have that much property.
Right.
And people have begged us not to sell any more of our lots. So we try to, you know, factor that into our consideration. I, I just wanted to make that clear.
Well, I appreciate that, you know, the, what I've seen that the shipyard did for Wrangell, I, you know, that's my plan to do for Craig. Is to build it up and make, you know, industry, the money and jobs. I've also just recently hired, uh, ex-city employee, uh, Jason Clayz. Has been really beneficial to me. Um, he's advised me on a lot of stuff around my shop that the city does and I should do and stuff like that and it's great, love him, great guy.
Yes, we need to get our younger guys in there learning from guys like you because, you know, after a while you get my age and you realize you're the old guy on the job, so.
You don't even know I'm old.
Yes. Well, everybody's younger than me unfortunately. Any more discussion? Alright. We'll move to roll call vote please.
Jan Truvin.
Yes.
Sean Thomas is absent. Josh Bennett.
Yes.
Millie Skunover.
Yes.
Michael Campnich.
Yes.
Chanel McKinley.
Yes.
Thank you, Craig. Moving on to resolution twenty-five dash fifteen, federal register for the roadless rule.
For this question, Mr. Mayor, I would like to, um, adopt resolution twenty-five dash fifteen affirming that the city of Craig supports for maintaining the roadless rule on the Tongus National Forest.
Second. Open for discussion.
Well, that said, as I understood in the past, that the two mining, the Bochan Mountain and the Yucor Mountain projects, if we don't get a road to them, I'm not saying build lots of roads there, but if there's not a road there, all that money will go just to Ketchikan, it's already doing. So there was talk about a road so they can get healthcare and supplies and stuff like that.
Um. Bochan, which is Yucor, um, Canadian oil mining company as well as, um, the other mine right across from it, um, Niblak.
Yeah.
Um, there's, with the roadless rule act, you can't build a road there right now, you are right. Um, uh, the road that they're proposing to build, the eighteen mile new road that they'd actually be able to drive and access. Um, there's already, I think, eleven miles of road out there needing seven new miles of road built, um, which it would be a road that you really would not be, um, be, be driving people to work every day. That's outside of the island is already closer to, um, Ketchikan. Um, they're actually looking at putting the Minery Factory in Wharton. Um, I followed this like really closely, um, uh, so, so yeah, um. This, basically we were at a meeting with Murkowski the other day and, um, there was a lot of pushback on the, like, you know, for the roadless rule from a lot of the community. Um, so, um, I gave, you know, let, Mr. Campnich, I said, you know, I, I know where you're, you're looking at it, go ahead and write something up. Um, to be ready because life has to begin by tomorrow. If, um, we do get a vote from the council or the community that they are, you know, are, you know, for the roadless rule, then, um, we can have something posted, you know, tomorrow, you know, tomorrow. Um, so that's where this came from and that's why it was also, um, you know, on for public comment, to see where the public was. Um, so, uh, that's, uh, that, that was basically where, where we're at with that, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, I would like to address one, one aspect of some of the comments that have been made. The present roadless rule does not preclude roads being built for mining, for energy, for community development, or other economic benefits to the area. It's basically just excluding roads into inventoried roadless areas that would be used for logging. Um, there has been, since the roadless rule was implemented in, I think, two thousand and one, there have been around fifty projects where roads have been built in inventoried roadless areas outside of, you know, for other reasons, uh, than logging, it has been for, for mining, you know, there's some of the energy, uh, corridors and stuff that have been built, um, things like that, I think there was a road built to take over to the east side of uh, was it, Tewa or Kupanoff, the unit left to Kupanoff Island, uh, so they have closer access to Petersburg. Um, roads can be built, notwithstanding the roadless rule, um, for things other than, um, logging roads.
Mr. Mayor, this is exactly what I was gonna say, also, that roads with proper permits for mining and utilities can be, they still can go through, there's still growth. I think we've heard from the galley about other states, I think the issue is, Millie has brought up, the roads that are currently here just will not survive without maintenance, you know? There's a lot of roads out here already, that's how I feel. I wish we could, I wish the, the feds could maintain every road that currently is built out there, it would be nice, it'd be really nice. That's, that's all I have to say.
Yeah. Any more discussion? Roll call vote please.
Chanel McKinley.
Hello.
Michael Campnich.
Yes.
Millie Skunover?
Yes.
Josh Bennett?
Yes.
Sean is absent. Jan Turgen?
No.
There you go. Let it pass. Moving on to unfinished business, track the assessment. Um, this is a long, long, uh, bunch of paperwork that we got in that was provided that we will, we don't have to discuss a whole lot of it right now. I didn't get it till today myself, uh, but I looked through it and the big concerns that I had. Um, of course, we knew there's a lot of environmental, um, compliance that we were going to have to do on that. But seeing the pictures of the dump site and the gas cans and stuff like that is like something that I'll be talking with, uh, with our, our partners here for tomorrow, next week to look at, see what we can do, uh, to get these dump sites cleaned up. And then, of course, there's going to be a lot of planning and NEPA and, uh, wetland delineation and all that good stuff that, that came with this report. So this report was just basically to get it out to the council. Really, there's no action item on this, but, um, and then, of course, it's going to take us some reading. But.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, only thing I gotta say, I completely agree. Um, and also, if, if these, uh, temporary access permit holders, if they could be temporary, that would be a lot better instead of three hundred and sixty-five days for a lot of years. There's nothing against the business, but a broken down vehicle and a trailer for temporary access does not look good on something that we're trying to do here. I, I just wanted to bring your attention that stream one and two is just runoff. There's culverts on the other side, lower of the trail, uh, the other one on Sean C property to the west. That's just runoff. So if those were diverted, there'd be a, a lot less water in our, our land.
They, they're categorized as fish tricks because they're, um, even though they're, they're runoff, they actually feed them drawn in a stream or head where the fish come in. Um, so you, you may have to, you know, put a culvert in there. It may not be a fish pipe because it's not, you know, a fish habitat. But every, every culvert you drive in from the Black Bear Road going out to the I-Grill is considered a fish trick that comes across the road. Um, but, um, but yes, it's, uh, um, depending on what we can do when we get an engineer design on it, this is going to be very, you know, it's going to be expensive to get the design done and, um, it'll give us, start giving us conversation on how much can we develop all at once? What size may be building or housing can we look at, um, putting down on it, um, and, you know, what part is going to be the least parts that needs to be permitted? And, you know, the easiest path to resistance first and then, and then go from there. I was surprised to see that they still categorize the eagle tree as an eagle tree. Because, um, I thought, I was under the impression that it was an abandoned tree that was no longer an eagle tree, but he did, he did reference that. Like I said, I only got this today and I got in at two o'clock.
My apologies.
Oh, no, 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 no. But, but, but wasn't you Ivy? It was, uh, I, I put this on, on the agenda knowing that it wasn't going to be presented till Monday. And then I was in sick all week. So I was like, so when I started reading, I was like, oh, wow. Um, holy cow, this is everything that we kind of knew what it was going to say, but they actually provided a really good report. I was, uh, I was impressed. I was a little sad that they did their job so well. Of course, they could have put on some blinders and, but, yes, like I said, um, we're going to be, this is going to be a hot topic here for probably no, many meetings to come, but. Yeah, I need my glasses. Any more discussion? Um, track the assessment. All right, moving on to new business. Tourism committee member appointment.
I move to confirm the appointment of Greg Grass with the Tourism Advisory Committee. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That would make two fishermen on that committee and I think it needs to be a more diverse group of people.
That doesn't make sense for it, especially being a tourism. Because how long have we had it posted for?
Um, I mean, when we first started, it was a few months ago, I think, uh, Mary Salazar put hers in first. It took quite a few people. Took quite a long time to hit, you know, the four that we have. Um, this was the most recent. Um, I have one suggestion from somebody that we look at making a few more appointments as well. Get, you know, over five, you know, get six, seven, you know, people on, on the committee, but, um, uh, at this, yeah, at this point in time, it was the one other person that put their name in the hat and. I guess that diverse groups are, are good.
So we haven't seconded it? Did you want me to do something?
Did we second it? No, no, seconded it first. Okay.
So the motion dies if there's no second.
Do we have a second?
I will second it.
Okay. Mike has a second.
Mr. Mayor, I believe what Millie stated has merit. Uh, I wish there was others, as Victoria Merritt stated in her letter to us, that we need more of a balance, even charter, you know, charter fishermen would be nice, lodge owners. I, I believe once we have more people from the same, I wouldn't say economic value, but the same place, it, it, it's the same decisions, you know? I, I don't, I, I have nothing against Mr. Grass.
I don't either.
I, it has nothing to.
I think this is a new committee and as they keep getting together and, um, I think they plan on having another meeting before they start going out to the, you start getting public comment on a lot of this stuff. Um, uh, so, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so I would like to address my seconded. I actually feel the same way. We need more balance in the community, excuse me, in the committee. But I also think we have to respect somebody signing up for a volunteer position when we've had nobody else do that. Um, it's not whether I, what my opinion is of what kind of job Mr. Grass will do. It's, you know, it's about recognizing people that want to commit to contributing to the city. And I think it's a bad method if we don't recognize that. At the same time, I like the suggestion you offered. I, I would like to see maybe consideration for a couple more seats that are designated for tourism. And continue to try to reach out to, you know, those in the tourism visitor industry and, and get, you know, a little more diversity on the board. I, so that's my reason to second you in that. Um, I think we need the diversity, but I also think we have to support people when they, when they sign up for a committee, especially when nobody else has.
Thank you. Any more discussion on tourism committee appointment?
I, I, Mr. Mayor, I think the only, the last discussion I'd like to have is putting a cap of committee members for this, maybe seven. You know, hopefully we can get a couple more and then, you know, I, I, I think somewhere around seven, you can get a sideways boat, get a boat out of it.
All right. Any more discussion?
I would just say I agree with Grass, with Josh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So it's three ayes and two noes. So we'll keep it advertised. All right, thank you. Moving on to A P E I fund allocation. Believe they got a grant for two thousand dollars to, for safety equipment for the bull. And they're wanting to spend like sixteen hundred and some dollars for the safety equipment. Um, if that's what this is. Yes, the city of products have received two thousand dollars of A P E I safety grant money. The memo proposed allocating these funds to enhance staff preparedness and safety equipment availability, staff training in Ketchcan is August, or eight, four, twenty-five? That already happened. Um, sixteen hundred and eighteen dollars and twelve cents to deep water certifications. Basically coded out to the grant application, um, for three hundred and eighty-one dollars. So grant expenditures, two thousand and basically using those funds for this.
I move to approve the pro- appropriation of two thousand dollars A P I safety grant funds.
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call though, please.
Jan Turgen?
Yes.
Sean is absent. Josh Bennett?
Yes.
Millie Skunover?
Yes.
Michael Kempnich?
Yes.
Chanel McKinley?
Yes.
All right, going through this. Formation of City, Craig, Administrators Hiring Committee.
I move to confirm the creation of the City of Craig Hiring Committee with the name volunteers as numbers. Second.
So we do have a couple of interim applications and then a few other applications to go through. The interim ones are just very, um, if you don't find a permanent one soon, there are a few after Mr. Bennett suggested going on the AML site. That was great. Um, got on there the next day and Becca has sent in, um, basically a request and application to every person that was on there besides one. Um, and, uh, yeah, we, we've been getting some good feedback. Um, and looking forward to maybe getting the community together to see what the council wants to look like, what their community wants to look like and, um, absolutely. May I ask? Yeah.
Is there public comment on that? That's what I was here for.
If you would like to say something, go ahead.
It's okay. Uh, Aaron Bean, five oh five Hilltop. Uh, Hilltop Drive here in Craig. I was just curious if, if you guys were going to have the hiring committee, when are we going to know who it's comprised of? Is that typically just the council?
Normally.
Anybody? Oh, okay. Um, are you guys going to wait until after the election or is that something, a decision you're going to make before that, do you think?
I think the sooner we start looking at getting, uh, yeah, the, 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 the sooner the better. Um, well, and, and basically I really probably don't find us high finding, um, the right fit right now, but if we can get an interim in here to run the day-to-day operations and mentor the staff, a lot of these people that were on that list have been doing this for several years. They are well-versed in municipalities and dealing with a lot of the stuff that we have going on. Um, and then, um, the committee can, uh, take their time and find the right person. And then once that person, um, comes in for a job interview, um, we, you know, hopefully they'll make it to a city council meeting where it can be introduced and, uh, meet other entities, uh, in the community.
Yeah. Just as a, just as a note, what I wanted to share was my experience with it. I was on the assembly in Sitka for years and we went through a few administrators and they spent a tremendous amount of money advertising and using hiring firms and taking interims in and out. And a lot of times, people that were qualified in the community or people that were more community oriented that are from Alaska or someone that has experience in Alaska municipalities, in particular smaller towns. I would highly recommend that. It seems like those are the types of people that are probably best suited for the position that aren't always necessarily considered. And, um, yeah, again, I would hope that, you know, before a final decision on, on hiring someone as the administrator, maybe that could be left to the new council if it would happen to change at all, um, as you guys know, I'm running. And I do have experience in that. I think that, um, I was hoping that, that at least the names of the people that were going to be, um, considered would be made public. So people can either reach out to them or have a committee meeting where, you know, you meet the candidates and have questions of, of the people. Um, another thing too is once those names are out, people can do what they do and make sure that there's not anything that would be concerning. I know that there was final runners-up that the public brought things out and, you know, just part of the process. So.
A- a- absolutely. And, and, and the, the, the voting will be over before, then it will, will, will be over before we get a, before we get a candidate. It's only got a couple of weeks, um, before the elections and, um, I don't, with the process of going through interviews and everything like that, I don't see, uh, I don't see us having a permanent one hired yet as chair.
I also feel like, um, posting people's names that have applied for a job, no matter where it is, is kind of private. A lot of people don't tell people about certain jobs they apply for because of other things happening other places. So I feel like that would be a big invasion of privacy to post something out like that.
Yeah, I'm hoping when the committee comes, comes, when we come together as a hiring committee, we pick out our applicants and then we, when we go to a finer, final interview. And when we're bringing them to the community, um, then, you know, everybody's going to be able to meet the person and, um, get a weigh-in on, you know, and do their due diligence. And we are staying away from any, any firms on this hiring process right now. We haven't, uh, paid any money to go out and, um, get on N D or any of those big crazy, because there's a lot of charges that come with that. We figured, uh, we could do our due diligence and, and we, um, find, find the right candidate without hitting that big platform yet. So.
And then I wasn't, I'm sorry, there's another meeting at the beginning of the meeting. Um, I was hoping that the city could offer at least the time in between now and, and voting that, um, you know, any of the contested seats, you could have a couple hours. The clerk wouldn't have to, it wouldn't take a lot of time, just a few hours, a mic and open floor, and people can ask questions. There's a lot of things that are changing in the community that I think, especially like the tourism, the additional cruise ships that are coming to town. I mean,
I, I.
Those, those big issues, I think, would be, it would be important to have the public aware of where you stand on a policy or a decision. Um, and it, it wouldn't take a lot. I know I, I had asked and I was told that we were short-staffed. I, I totally get that. I'm not suggesting that you roll out a red carpet and have a marching band and a parade. I'm just saying like two hours, open mic, really casual, no agenda.
If, yeah.
Notice to the public to where people can come and ask hard questions of people that are running.
If the candidates would, would, would like to do that, then they're more than welcome. I know, um, uh, nobody rolled out the red carpet for me. I spent a lot of time talking to community members, you know, Sundays, sitting down, you know, open door, I had an open door policy. Um, and if, uh, candidate can do that anytime, um, they can say, hey, meet me at such and such place anytime. If, um, if it's something that you guys would like to see every candidate there, um, to answer the same questions or something like that, then, um, get ahold of candidates and, and see what works out for everybody to do something like that. Um, but, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, and as, as I was thinking, obviously it wasn't necessarily something that you task somebody with.
Yeah.
As, as a municipality, as a local government, just putting it on a webpage on this date at this time, we're going to have a forum. May or may not be anyone there, but people that want to come and ask people questions that are on the ballot are free to do that. Um, you know, I'm not, I'm not talking about campaigning. I'm talking about a, a community.
Meet the candidates.
Hosted by the city that would take nothing more than two hours over it. You know, city gym here. So it's just advance notice and it's on the public notice of this, from the city, not, not from a candidate, from an interested candidate. And, you know, I'm presuming the contestants, the people that are up for contested seats would show up. And I think that there would be a big turnout. If it were somewhere here and there's issues that people don't necessarily feel comfortable about knocking on my door or calling me to, know me and they presuppose things about me, then it gives them an open forum. And then you also get to hear your opposition. If Mr. Kempnich feels opposite, many people know that. So just an informed decision is all I'm saying. And the same goes for, for the mayor's seat this time around. So I would hope everyone would agree with that. And, you know, I didn't hear anything back, um, on my follow-up, but I guess I'll, I'll email you guys again. Um, if I take it upon myself to fund it, then not everybody's welcome. I'm not going to.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, it wasn't about funding. There was, there was, you know, one, two candidates that had mentioned it and it was like, if it's something that, you know, however. There was, there was, you know, one, two candidates that had mentioned it and it was like, if it's something that, you know, however it wants to be presented. Um, I didn't know until talking to, um, my mentor over here, that Craig has done this in the past. Um, so when she had brought it up to me here today, um, on the way back from Sitka, I was like, hey, by the way, you know, it'd be a great thing to do. And I said, has the city ever done that before? Cause I, and she's like, once, so, uh.
And not very many people showed up.
Yeah, but-
It was interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, but absolutely. I mean, if you guys can, maybe we'll, uh, get all of the people who's, um, up and see if they, we can pick a date together, throw on a map. If people aren't gonna attend, then, um, then maybe the people who are gonna attend will pick out a date and, you know, do it at City Gym somewhere and we'll.
Can my recommendation?
Yes. You're gonna be there, man.
Is that everyone has busy schedules?
Yes.
So say you have four people or five or whatever, whatever date, like say Wednesday was a good date. Three people said Wednesday and two said, no, I can't make it. Um, trying to work around people's schedules is very difficult. So I would, you know, whatever day, uh, the most candidates can show up, I would say pick that day. Cause we're into the sport season.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
We're a busy community.
Yes.
Sorry not to get off the subject. Mr. Mayor, uh, with this being said, there's gonna be three to five members from the city, Craig and council. Are you just looking to form a committee? Are you looking for people to enlist in the community here at the office? You know, citizens?
Um, I mean, I, 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 I figured, you know, we are, are based our hiring committees, um, every time in the past since I've been here has been the council, you know? And then, and we, uh, we have done it. And if anybody who wanted to be on the hiring committee was, was on it, I don't think we'd ever, um, put a number on it.
No, no, what I mean is, are you anticipating someone calling, emailing, coming here and saying, hey, I wanna be on the committee? Like they did for the tourism committee?
No.
Okay. You're, you're seeing if we wanna get on and have a recommendation or two?
I'm, I'm saying if the, if you, that the whole council wants to say, I wanna be on the hiring committee for the new administrator. We're like, okay, you're on the hiring committee for the new administrator and we can, well, I guess, we can't do that because then we'd have a quorum. Um, so I guess we would pick, uh, two people on the hiring committee and, you know, or rotate, um, but.
You can have a quorum in the executive session.
Yeah.
You know.
We could go into executive session for, 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 for the hiring committee. You got it right, it's a personnel, that's a personal action.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I was just wondering, cause I know that the, the hiring committee for the last administrator, there was members from the community that were present in the hiring committee, just like they do at the school. Uh, the only thing I'd like to mirror from the school is when they bring in their new superintendent, they bring in more than one and they do a meeting greet. And they do that interview process in person. Um, I think that's a good feel for the community where you actually get to meet one of the candidates. Not everyone, you know, but one or two, maybe three, um, especially if someone local applied.
Now, there was quite a bit of concern from, I heard from, from council that, you know, was bringing people from the outside to do the, to do the main, uh, picking selection um, of a, of a candidate. But once we select our candidate and bring him to the community, then it's open, you know, it's open season. Get to meet everybody. But that's up to you guys, I'm not a policymaker. I'm just, uh, the guy who wrote the meeting.
Well, as elected, as elected officials, Mr. Mayor, that is our due diligence.
Exactly, I agree with a hundred percent.
Especially when it comes to the admin.
Yeah.
For committees like the tourism or like the canry group, that's, that's totally different. Apples and oranges.
No, I agree, I was just asking.
Yeah.
Um.
I would like to be on that committee.
Okay, I, I would imagine everybody would want to probably be on the committee if it's.
Don't put me down for that.
Take a break for now, I'm perfect.
Yeah, I, if it's just council members, mayor, I imagine that, I don't, I'll speak for Mike or Shawna, I think Mike's still, so.
Yeah, I mean, you brought a great idea. We could go on an executive session, discuss it and, and then, you know, come out and, and, um, yeah. We, I think it's processed right now. We do have a couple of applicants to talk about for the interim and then, uh, we could do our process of looking for, uh, you know, full, full-time administrator after that.
I've been here twenty-six years and one of our biggest challenges on any of the hiring committees has been if we hire somebody from the lower forty-eight and they're well-qualified, either, you know, they're citywide. The bulk of them are citywide. The wife gets here, she doesn't like the remoteness, the school isn't big enough, there's no malls. So that has been our biggest challenges when we, because we have to pay for them to come and check it out. And then we have to pay a certain amount for their moving expenses and then they're gone.
Now, with the moving expenses, we, they're under contract to stay for a certain amount of time. And if they don't feel those obligations, they refund the, the moving expenses. We do use our Alaska airline miles on all of the candidates that we caught up in, in the past. So, so we have saved money by using our Alaska airline miles. But, yeah, I reiterate this in our world, um, when we bring in linemen and other people, you know, they're here for three to four years or they get their certificate and, and then they're gone. So if we can find somebody who's been weathered like we are, then it's, um, then it definitely creates a more sustainable outcome. So Josh, he'd like to be on the hiring committee, Millie, he'd like to be on the hiring, Jan, how about you, Mike, you wanna be on the hiring committee?
Yes, I will.
Alright. So there we go. If everybody agrees to that.
Sounds good.
All in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, the only reason that I, I say this, should we add Shawna for her to lead herself?
Yeah, if Shawna would like to be on there, she, she, yes, we, we already have a quorum, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I figured, you know, it would be, uh, it might be a longer process than we'd hoped, but, um, once we, uh, one thing I will add, I guess if, you know, that we brought up, um, if we do find an interim, uh, well-seasoned guy, he's been doing this for a long time, he's working out, I would invite him to be on the hiring committee as well to help us out.
Sorry for interrupting then.
No, no, you're good, thank you. Yeah. Any more council comments?
I have a couple.
Oh, uh, no, I don't think the roll call, we went through, sorry.
I don't think we completed that.
Okay, so I, so we didn't do a motion, so.
There was a motion.
Okay, well, I said all in favor.
Oh, I never said aye, I was trying to.
Oh, you didn't say aye, okay, alright, okay. All those in favor of the city council being the hiring committee?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Alright, thank you, Josh.
Sorry.
Okay, Mike, you have some council comments?
Yeah, two things. First off, there was, you know, a fair amount of discussion about roads on the island. Um, you know, that's a big issue, people like the roads, I do as well. The Forest Service hosts their road management, uh, program, their ATM program. I can't even tell you what that acronym stands for, something travel management, but in the past, they have, uh, held public meetings for, to take input on road management issues on Prince Lleil Island. Um, about a year and a half ago, I actually just privately talked to the, the, the super, uh, forest supervisor for, um, the district ranger, excuse me, the district ranger for the island and encouraged him to hold one, he was thinking about it. Uh, but, you know, we had changes that hadn't happened. I think it's appropriate for the city, and I would suggest that we write a letter to the foresters, uh, um, the district ranger and ask for an island-wide ATM public meeting sometime this winter. Um, so we can talk about roads, cause they, there's a lot of interest in roads and maintaining roads and which roads are, are, you know, most popular with the public. So that's number one. And number two is, um, you know, now that we have a better feel for the, you know, the issues with city land and selling it or not selling it and what the, you know, the underlying conditions are with the Alaska and sub-surface rights. Um, I think the A P N T vote, you know, if, if we didn't have a full, uh, council and I think we've learned more, um, their, their land vote, you know, it didn't pass because of the lack of a quorum. I would ask that that be on the agenda again for our next meeting, uh, for further consideration, renewed consideration.
You got that written down, Becca? Alright, thank you, Mike. Any more council comments?
I just have one, uh, what's in the haul-out building?
I'm not sure, I was gonna look that up. This was brought, but this was brought to my attention when I was gone on the Sitka for Southeast Conference and, um, planning on following up with that. And, yeah, the, uh, it was, yeah. Alan's went off on vacation, I believe, and, um, I was told he parked it where he parked it instead inside the building. People were just questioning to put it inside the building and it, I didn't get an update on the pumps, so, um, anytime, I like to have an inventory. So anytime we have a pump that came from France and it blew up, and so surprised we didn't have one on the shelf. Um, so knowing that they're going out to, going out to repair, um, probably through H B S hydraulics. Um, we have boats that are getting prorated right now at the time because we can't put them back in the water. So now they're in the uplands and we can't put them back in the water as needed. So they're getting prorated, um, the cost at, at the time, um, because we can't run our haul-outs, so.
You and I have been here for two years.
Yeah.
And we can go back, we can go tonight if you want, next week, and you can go over the monthly report. It's almost every other month that there's an electrical issue with the haul-out or starter, or there's always an issue. If that thing would live in the building that it was built for, I, I would, I would have to imagine that we'd have less, less issues. And, and everything, as you know, is in a deficit. We're just etching further in it by having to pay, pay people.
I'm new and when it comes to this a little bit, but I was told that they pulled out a same boat, or the size of the same boat that they quit pulling out because they haven't pulled that size of a boat out. And when they pulled that size of boat out, that's when they blew the motors out. And so, um, yeah, I was told they quit pulling those sizes of boats out. Um, I haven't been able to talk to, uh, our master about it yet, but I was, you know, I was kind of under the impression that, um, it was overstressed. But, yeah, um, that thing's gonna be coming up on the budget here one of these days. I did talk to the mariculture guys and they did say that some other things do qualify for mariculture, our ice house. Um, and I told them, hey, we got a boat haul-out. That is, you know, that it's all those things for your mariculture as well. You guys gotta pull your boats out, you know, get them worked on for mariculture too. So I did talk to, to Dan Ness about that, um, just yesterday. And, uh, be looking forward to getting with those guys to see if we can get some of that mariculture money. And on top of that, I did meet with Stedman, I'm not sure if I mentioned this, um, but let's start looking at our harbor. Um, the fifty percent match fund, one-time match fund is not a one-time match fund. Um, you can break it up and you can actually apply it for that money, um, and the state will match you, you're, it's on a point system. Um, and Stedman said, so we just can't match money on something that they already built the match funds for. So if we went to North Cove and we wanted to add more stalls and put five million dollars of the city money in to build, that'll give us five million dollars of state money. So it's a fifty-fifty. Um, even John Bulling talking, him, he was under the impression that it was a one-time, one-time go. I, we were talking about that when we were flying down and I said, he's like, wow, I said, so then we could go over to South Cove, you know? Down the road and say, hey, we wanna put two million in South Cove. And they said, okay, here's two million, it's all a point system. And they only, they only, you can only match up to five million, um, and they only give out so much. So if you don't get that five million that year, because you just move up on the list because somebody else did. And then whatever's left in the money, they go fund a smaller harbor. Um, like he said, Davidson Landing, they funded Davidson Landing one time. But, um, I was kinda excited because we've been talking about more, bigger harbor and, uh, the max fund was a one-time funding, but, uh, Stedman, I mean, said that, that was different. We can fund more harbors, so. Yes. Any more council comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Having been here for twenty-six years and sitting in your seat, you have a full-time job. You're on call twenty-four-seven when the electricity goes out or there's landslides. I just want you to know, I appreciate you. I mean, you're on top, call twenty-four-seven with the city also.
Yes.
And having been where you're at, I know what that's like. So I want you to know I really appreciate you being spread out so thin.
No, and thank you. I'm, I get to choose to go run around, chase the storms now that I got moved into the, um, power operation manager position for A P N T. Um, so hopefully we'll be able to give those guys a little bit more support. They are the guys out there doing it every day, um, in these winds and rain and, um, we have the whole island back on besides, besides four people right now who lost their weather heads, um, and everybody will be back on Hydra tomorrow. So, um, and I appreciate you guys and the staff and, um, your great wealth of knowledge and they've always offered if I needed anything. So I'm glad I got people I can lean on. So, thank you, guys.
Move to adjourn.
Sex.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Hey, hey, Mike?
I am gonna look forward to sleeping tonight though this weekend.
Spending time with your oldest son?
No, but, yeah, well, my oldest son wants to go snorkeling for deer. Like, you know, to put on a snorkel and a mask to. He's like, Dad, I'm going with or without. At least that through the A D through. Perfect.
When I got here.
So, so we will reapply for that?
I reapply already.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Has appropriated the fund.
Just right. Will be approved, but yes, so I'm glad you picked it up. Thank you, Sam. Oh, thank you, Becca.
Last time we spoke, did you, you were planning to modify it?
Well, last time we spoke, I, I mentioned that it'd be nice if the committee would modify it and bring it to the council. I had seen, uh, just the last couple of days and I think the committee was like, well, the council should modify it. But, um, if the committee doesn't have a modification, um, then we'll, we'll go to the council to see if they, you know, if it's, if it's the, uh, if it should be on, if they wanna modify it. Um, at the time, after, you know, there was a few committee members or, I'm not sure how many committee members were for a modification. Um, so since it was brought up by you and then there's three other members, um, I wasn't sure if that was united front or if there's just one person wanting to modify it or if it was all three, if it was a committee in the whole.
Sorry, I can do it.
I don't know how to turn it off. Yeah, so, um, yes.
A committee is only a committee.
Yes.